There's always still one there. There's a big one out.
I don't know.
All right. Here you go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, we were in the big hole. Last week, over some cattle birds. Seeing what the snow is doing. Probably starting getting some snowfall stuff ready.
We had three inches up there this morning coming down pretty hard.
You said wisdom, that wasn't me.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I want me to grab it off of you.
Wasn't there. Simple bar. Going along.
All right. That's it?
Uh, got some approach problem, but we're working on that.
Nick.
Um, slowing down, we're just kind of coming. They're crushing cars. They'll be out of there this week is what they're hoping to be out of there. Some cars, so they're cooking right well. Something like that.
Kurt. Uh, we had thirty-three calls for service over the weekend for the sheriff's office. And then there's total of nineteen inmates downstairs. There's a bunch of sentencing today, we might get more. And dispatch had, I think, well over a hundred calls over the weekend for service. It's busy.
Hundred calls?
Yeah. Well over a hundred before I looked at, that's just from Friday to Monday. Ghosts. Time for change. Name it. Animals, criminal calls, uh, assistance, stuff like that. God damn it.
Hey, George.
Yeah, I was sharing with commissioners this morning, last week Tom and I were at Iowa State University in Ames, Iowa. A little bit north of Des Moines, Des Moines. And we were there learning about hazard plans, which are hazard analysis, uh, control point plans that processing plants use, like meat processing plants, which we have several in our county. So I got a lot of good information from some amazing people that have PhDs in meat science, which I never knew existed. And basically gonna be using them to help out any of the processors around here to improve their safety. Um, the other thing is state of Montana, finally, after talking about it the last four years since I've been in this job, is going completely digital with inspections, um, starting in November. So we are, I kind of planned ahead, last year our grant covered us by a surface probe, which is basically a little kind of a laptop I can bring out into the field and enter them into the database. And then it would be just a little bit easier. I've been filling out like five hundred forms a year by hand. And so it'll be a little bit kind of jumping into the nineties, I guess, if you want to say. So. And so then other than that, um, I just have several more inspections to do before the end of the year. I gotta do the rest of the paperwork to get our ten thousand dollars rest of the grant that we didn't spend on the trip, that we just went on and applied for a grant for next year and pretty much get ready for the Christmas party. We're planning, um, so anyways, that's pretty much it.
Bye.
Well, Tracy, I can tell you that I am further behind in technology than Joyce. It's gonna be a very quiet week because Thursday, Friday, it's, uh, the MBEA convention. And the teachers either will do it online or some of them will actually, actually go. I'm not going.
Where is it?
Uh.
Is it in Missouri?
Yeah. And the music one is in Helena. And then we had some, a problem with the grant proposals, grant applications that we submitted. And the clerks are working on fixing that little problem with apparently not enough information on budget. We didn't list enough, enough of how we were spending the money, so clerks have worked on that. Starting the statewide testing. We can do some of that testing. Some did it yesterday, some do it today, and some do it on Wednesday.
If anybody has trouble with their upgrading their technology, just call me on my too long, too short phone.
If I can get Joyce to give me the number.
There you go.
Yeah.
Just busy working on the general election stuff, so they're not gonna quiet, so.
Ben.
Just plodding along, still trying to learn the ropes. I just get one mess cleaned off my desk, as Tina would say, another tree comes and throws up one again.
I like that.
That happens.
A lot.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Shawna.
We had the plumber come down last week in the jail and they pulled the sump pump. Uh, that was fine. Um, I got covered in a lot of, I literally got covered in shit last week. It's gross. Um, so we ended up. I took a shower. So we ended up pulling the pump and finding out. That explains so much. Um, we ended up pulling the pump and finding out that it's, they believe it's electrical. They don't think nothing was, nothing actually seized up the pump inside of it, so it wasn't anything that got sucked up in there. They think it's something electrical, so they put, they took the compas, cath, capacitors that, there's four of them, but they took three of the four to get them checked out and ordered some more from, or some new ones from West Electric. Um, right now we're still running on the one pump that we manually had to drain, but we're looking into that. At least it wasn't the pump. As of yet. It's not the pump. So it's, yeah, it's a flux capacitor, it's ruined, back to the future. Other, and then we had the, I was here yesterday with the boiler. Um, we had some issues firing up the boiler. We had the relay switch for our feedwater tank wasn't working, so it would just constantly fill up the tank and then just spew out gallons of water. So we had that fixed yesterday along with the, um, boiler temperature sensor went out as well. So they were here fixing the boiler, so stuff running and warm. Um, other than that, we will just be dealing with weather. And we're supposed to be getting our spent thirty-four miles this week sometime, so. And that's probably all.
Kayla Planner.
Uh, I went to the Asses, Montana Association of Planners Conference last week. It was very informative. I learned all kinds of aspects of my position and of all of these little things. Ooh, look at this other time I have to read. So it was really great. Um, coming back, we have surveys coming in, we have road plane issues, we have subdivision covenants, and bikes and, and neighbors. So, yeah, it's gonna be pretty, pretty puggy. Puggy for.
Pretty.
The, today's the end of the world if you're running Windows 10, so it's the end today, writ. Everybody needs to be up to date on Windows life, it's not gonna die on you. But anyway, that's, uh, what I've been doing is running around getting those fixed. Then in the background, I'm working on Wisdom, South Jackson, Brown, Pitt, and CWPP as much as I can, so. It's all I got.
So Widow lady is all right?
Widow lady, really bad.
Staying busy in our office. Uh, we've got, uh, don't have any applicants yet for the new position. Uh, I think tomorrow's Cody's last day. Uh, so if anybody has any, uh, access to grind with him, now's the time. Uh, but we're sure sorry to see him go. Uh, I'm up in District Court all day, this is all horned. About to head back up there, so I'll be back, uh, back and forth down here. And, uh, yeah, staying busy. We've got a lot of, we've got some trials and stuff coming up and Margo and I are picking up, uh, picking up the slack for now.
You, you say you've got applicants?
Not yet.
Oh, cool.
You know, we're posted on the State Bar website and all the job stuff and the Montana County Internates Association. Uh, we spent a little money just to get it everywhere, so it's, uh, hopefully it's, hopefully we get somebody knocking on the door.
Good.
Yeah. And I'm just gonna try to poach somebody the way somebody poached Cody, so. I don't have, no shame right now, I have no shame.
Way you gotta do business.
That's right. It ain't show, it ain't show friends, it's show business.
So Kevin is doing an amazing job.
Yeah, he is.
On that renovation in there. And when you walk in, you just can feel the kind of the history of this building. And it's really spectacular that he, and it takes a little skill to be able to mesh together two different buildings the way he's doing it. And, uh, I just, I just wanna say, I'm, I'm really impressed with what's going on in there.
Absolutely.
Whatever, it looks great. Looks beautiful.
Typical remodel, but it takes a while.
Yeah, it's, you know.
That, that's not typical, that thing.
Involved in a lot of that. It just has to be. But it's neat.
Anybody else?
I just hope everybody's okay with exposed brick and exposed beams. We think it looks great, but, uh, it's, you know, probably the cheapest way to do it. Just take some stuff off.
Put lights in there, the raw light, that's kind of dark.
Yeah, well Jenny and Kayla, they like it kind of dark.
That's what it's like. What they do, when they get to my eyes, like light is my eyes.
Right.
All right, anybody else? Have a good week, guys.
Thank y'all.
We want to have Scott write a letter?
What's that?
We want to have Scott write a letter? We want to talk about it. He's got nine.
Okay. Yeah. Want to get, yeah, all I need is just the details, the names, address, be nice. And then just maybe a brief, uh, blurb about the what happened and when kind of thing.
You gotta do it for both.
Just out here, dude. Well, they withdrew theirs. So we have nothing going on there.
The sink fell through on that one parcel later, not building.
Yeah.
Today's course, eighty-two day. So Sky Jones has got ten issues on him.
I think they say that since last Friday, there were one hundred.
Dispatch calls?
Yeah.
Dispatch call.
Dispatch calls.
All of them in the last four, five days. That's... And Cody's last days today, maybe?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Said tomorrow, yeah.
He goes to Boz Angeles. I don't know about him. My granddaughter's over there and I convinced myself to over there to see her. So much different than it used to be.
Yeah, when they extended the sidewalk time into the street and started having music at tables. It turned pretty green pretty fast.
Oh, and more you say you turn up on seven, nineteen or anything, you pull up and stop and then you won't get through the next life and you have to stop again. I mean, you just stare at your way on that. It's crazy. But that's gross, you know? The endangered species in Gallatin County is somebody that's from Gallatin County. Yeah. I guess Sky Jones, he's supposed to be here, he said, or he's out there.
Yeah, we started this and have, I mean, what you gotta do is have Tina do this little summary real quick and then have somebody over here do it. I asked, talked to Sky about this too. And this is, uh, our decision, not his. Because he's already been, you know, that's why they don't like us being in planning board meetings because we hear all this shit and then we get to decide again. That's, that's sort of where he was at. So anyway, if he comes down here.
He just is gonna, he told me it was one of our decisions, but he's just curious if it's all approved. As he put it, our decision. So let's go. One start, one two. Tina starts, great, Tina.
I can, yeah, I can just read. This is just a little bit of a summary of why we decided what we decided. In summary, a family transfer exemption may not be granted. The exemption is sought for the purpose of evading review under the Montana subdivision and planning act. But it can be difficult for local officials to determine when an attempt to evade the MSPA, MSPA is intended. Beaverhead county certificate of survey review staff evaluated this proposal in strict accordance with the subdivision and planning act, sanitation and subdivision act, uniform standards which is certificate of surveys and the Beaverhead county subdivision regulations. We did not approve the family transfer survey under the Beaverhead county subdivision regulations XI dash C dash one MI, page one oh two. Criteria for review whether the proposed use of the family gift or sale exemption to divide the tract was previously created through the use of an exemption. The parcel being used to create the family transfer was previously created under a family transfer certificate of survey number seventeen fifty-two FT. State and local regulations with regards to exemptions provide for the governing body and its agents when determining whether an exemption is claimed for the purpose of evading MSPA shall consider all of the surrounding circumstances. These circumstances including nature of the claimant's business, the prior history of the particular tract in question, the proposed configuration of the tracts if the proposed exemption transaction is completed and any pattern of exempt transactions that will result in the equivalent of a subdivision without local government review. The review staff has determined that the subdivision review is more appropriate and a family transfer should not be utilized to avoid the process. Additionally, we ask for clarification as question eleven on the application pack had stated that other than the intended disposition set forth. In your application on file with the survey review committee, is there any type of agreement verbal or written regarding the creation, sale or development of the tract involved in the division? It would mark no, but it was determined that the tract is presentable as the first item. The county frequently receives requests from individuals who have acquired property by these means to sell the parcels primarily because of financial hardship, at which point the survey review board must decide whether or not this constitutes an attempt to evade the MSPA. A decision either way could expose the county to liability. And I listed some relative statutes of Montana that have indicated directly govern the family transfer exemptions of seventy-six-three one oh three and seventy-six-three five oh four. And seventy-six-three one oh three is the definition used in this chapter unless the context of something that clearly requires otherwise. Following definition applies to immediate family, male spouse, children by blood or adoption from parents. Seventy-six-three five oh four subdivision regulation contents, the subdivision regulations adopted under this chapter must comply with the requirements provided in seventy-six-three five oh one and at a minimum established criteria, the governing body or reviewing authority will use determination whether the proposed method of disposition using the exemptions provided by seventy-six-three two oh one or seventy-six-three two oh seven is an attempt to evade requirements of this chapter. Regulations must provide for an appeals process to the governing body if the reviewing authority is not the governing body. And I attached the previous, the previous survey exemption used on this parcel along with commissioner minutes from the similar situation with the Gillick family transfer and the county standpoint on such exemptions and the subdivision regulations from other counties that use the same criteria for processing family transfer exemptions. And you're welcome to look at these if you want. Scott just said that he's secretary, so he'll be down as soon as he can.
Yeah. For um, today's course, eighty-two day. So, Sky Jones has got ten shoes on.
I think they say that since like, ready there with hundred.
Dispatch calls?
Yeah.
Dispatch call.
Dispatch calls.
That's. And Cody's last days today, maybe?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Said tomorrow, yeah.
And he goes to Boz Angeles. I don't know about them. My granddaughter's over there and I convinced myself to over there to see her. So much different than it used to be.
Yeah, when they extended the sidewalk time into the street and started having music on tables. It did turn pretty green pretty fast.
Oh, and why do you say you turn up on seven, nineteen, or anything? You pull up and stop and then you won't get through the next life and you have to stop again. I mean, it just just stares at your way on that. It is crazy. But that's gross, you know? Endangered species in Gallatin County, so somebody that's from Gallatin County. Yeah. I guess Sky Jones, he's supposed to be here, he said, or he's out there.
Yeah, we started this and have, I mean, what you gotta do is have Tina do this little summary real quick and then have Yeah. Somebody over here do it. I asked, talked to Sky about this too. And this is uh uh our decision, not his. I think, cause he's already been, you know, that's why they don't like us being in planning board meetings. Cause we hear all this shit and then we get to decide again. Yeah. That's, that's sort of where he was at. So anyway, if he comes down here.
He just was gonna, he told me it was one of our decisions, but he's just curious if it's all approved. As he put it, our decision. So let's go. One start, one two. Tina starts, great, Tina.
I can, yeah, I can just read, this is just a little bit of a summary of why we decided what we decided. Um in summary, a family transfer exemption may not be granted. The exemption is sought for the purpose of evading review under the Montana subdivision and planning act. But it can be difficult for local officials to determine when an attempt to evade the MSPA, MSPA is intended. Beaverhead county certificate of survey review staff evaluated this proposal in strict accordance with the subdivision and planning act, sanitation and subdivision act, uniform standards which is certificate of surveys, and the Beaverhead county subdivision regulations. We did not approve the family transfer survey under the Beaverhead county subdivision regulations XI dash C dash one MI, page one oh two. Criteria for review whether the proposed use of the family gift or sale exemption to divide the tract was previously created through the use of an exemption. The parcel being used to create the family transfer was previously created under a family transfer certificate of survey number seventeen fifty-two FT. State and local regu- state and local regulations with regards to exemptions provide for the governing body and its agents when determining whether an exemption is claimed for the purpose of evading. MSPA shall consider all of the surrounding circumstances. These circumstances including nature of the claimant's business, the prior history of the particular tract in question, the proposed configuration of the tracts, if the proposed exemption transaction, transaction is completed, and any pattern of exempt transactions that will result in the equivalent of a subdivision without local government review. The review staff has determined that the subdivision review is more appropriate and a family transfer should not be utilized to avoid the process. Additionally, we ask for clarification as question eleven on the application pack packet stated that other than the intended disposition set forth. In your application on file with the survey review committee, is there any type of agreement verbal or written regarding the creation, sale, or development of the tract involved in the division? It would mark no, but it was determined that the tract is present and listed for sale. The county frequently receives requests from individuals who have acquired property by these means to sell the parcels primarily because of financial hardship. At which point the survey review board must decide, must decide whether or not this constitutes an attempt to evade the MSPA. A decision either way could expose the county to liability. And I listened to some relative statutes of Montana county that have directly governed the family transfer exemptions of seventy-six-three-one-oh-three and seventy-six-three-five-oh-four. And seventy-six-three-one-oh-three is the definition used in this chapter. Unless the context of something that clearly requires otherwise, following definition applies. Immediate family, immediate spouse, children by blood or adoption from parents. Seventy-six-three-five-oh-four subdivision regulation contents, the subdivision regulations adopted under this chapter must comply with the requirements provided in seventy-six-three-five-oh-one and at a minimum established criteria, the governing body or reviewing authority will use determination whether the proposed method of disposition using the exemptions provided by seventy-six-three-two-oh-one or seventy-six-three-two-oh-seven is an attempt to evade requirements of this chapter. Regulations must provide for an appeals process to the governing body if the reviewing authority is not the governing body. And I attached the previous, the previous service exemption used on this parcel along with commissioner minutes from the similar situation with the Gillic family transfer and the county standpoint on such exemptions and the subdivision regulations from other counties that use the same criteria for processing family transfer exemption claims. And you are welcome to look at these if you want. Scott just enough that he's secretary, he won't be doing this anymore.
Well, reading through this, uh, I've got some real qualms with some of our regulations and the one in particular that they denied this by. Reading regulations, I guess, I, you know, I'm not an English major, so I never pay attention till I think, till these issues come up. All family transfers we've done before cuts off a little bit of acre they give to somebody. This one has sort of been just reversing that. And I've always looked at it that, that, once you do that, that little one acre piece or five acre piece, whatever they give to somebody, it always says cannot be divided again. So now we look in our regulations and when you do a family transfer, which was done by Coleman on this one. So they did, they did a family transfer on that. And what Beaverhead county's regulations is saying, again, even if Coleman had that, he could not, not do another family transfer without going through subdivision. And I think that is in direct co- conflict with state law. Uh, and I've always just used the, the flipping scenario, if, if the McGinnity kids have one of these, a great big place, and the old man wanted to do that, he could do it twelve different times without going through review. He could give each one of the McGinnity kids a five acre parcel, or he had this big piece, and go through it time and time and time again.
No, one time, twelve time, you could give twelve.
Twelve times.
At one time.
Okay, but, but so where did the, but with our regulations, once he did that first one, the remainder, the ranch, can't go, he wouldn't be able to do a second one without going through review.
Right, each person can only do one.
For each kid?
No, each person can only do one.
For each kid?
One.
For each family member?
Yes, you can do twelve at one time, you.
No.
You can't do twelve at different times, you can only do twelve at one time.
Where's it say that?
Says a great well.
I mean, I've read through that a hundred times. You don't need, what, I'm, I'm going through the scenario of somebody who's gonna do one for their children when that kid turned twenty-one, or eighteen, pick an age. So you do one for the oldest kid. You do the second one for the, you know, the next kid that turns twenty-one. You do one like that, and that's what, I, I, it doesn't say that they have to be done all at once.
Yes, I. So it might be in the MCA, but it is, you can only, you can only do one. You could do one for twelve kids at one time, but you can't do one, and then one, and then one, and then one. You have to, only one transfer per person, per county. So you could do six and your wife could do six, but you couldn't do twelve at twelve different times.
Only one parcel may be conveyed, conveyed to each family member of the landowner under this exemption in each county where the landowner owns property.
So you can give one to each one of your kids, but you can only do it one time, cause you yourself can only gift it at one time. But you can do twelve at one time, but you can't do twelve at twelve different times.
Alright, well then that's where we're gonna have to get some legal opinion because that's wrong. Uh, anyways, with that said.
Our local ones.
Huh?
And you're saying, what you're saying is that's the way that our local subdivision regulations read.
No, that's what I just read out of state law. Where, what our local regulation says is that when you do this the second time, the remaining tract was, is gonna be thrown into this too. We've never done that before.
I apologize for being late.
Cause if this, if that's the case, if they can only do it one time, one time, then, then the criteria we ask on these family transfers, I think is, that's, if it's done once, it's done. If they're abusing the remainder, and not, and like I said, I've always, my biggest problem with most of these family transfers, they get subdivisions and they're giving a piece away. These were, everybody uses that scenario when you've got a ranch and you're gonna give pieces to your kids to do. That remainder, the ranch, should not be considered in this thing. And, you know, then when you read deeper into this, that it travels with the land is out of range. I always met, assumed that travel with land was the piece that was created by the family transfer, not the remainder also. And if that's the case, it's a whole lot different what happens with family transfers.
One of the kids in the thing, that's all from family.
I don't even know who owns that five acre piece Coleman did before, but if they came in here and wanted to split it with family transfer, I agree, they can't do that with family transfer, that piece. But if Coleman's would've come in and went and do one for their next kid or their wife, or this exact same thing that the Coleman's do, they, they, they can do it, cause I don't think you can.
Not the same Coleman, like, I don't know what his first name was, but it was Mark Coleman. He couldn't do it again, cause he already did one.
That's what I said, I disagree with that. That's, that's not what this law says.
Where does your private property rights start? Because we've never done a family transfer. Coleman's did, but we haven't.
That's what I'm saying, that's where I think the issue.
In a couple words. And if that guy that got the family transferred, they sold it. Ever who owns this little five acre piece, it should, I mean, I don't know what it says on the title and deal and all that kind of stuff. That should be said that they can't do a family, or an exemption on that piece of property. That makes sense to me, right, wrong, or didn't, even if it's sold two or three times, get into your part. But if a little five acre parcel is created by that, I can see you can't do it again. But the rest of the ranch shouldn't have that same criteria on it anyway, even if Coleman still had, is what I'm saying.
I think you have to look at the whole thing, I'm not saying it pertains to this one in particular. But when you keep doing these family transfers on family transfers, you start out with one piece and then this, the father gives it to four of his daughters, and then four of those daughters divide it into their five kids. Their five kids do one on that same piece and they divide it, and now you have like twenty-five lot subdivision that has not the, then you have a whole mess. So you kind of have to look at the whole picture, and that's what we do, we look at the whole.
Don't let the four daughters go through that conversation again, the, this guy gave it to the four daughters.
And then the four daughters?
No, let's don't go there. I, I, where I'm disagreeing, you, you say they have to give it to the four daughters on the same day. That he can't give it to the one daughter when she turns twenty-one, the next daughter when she turns twenty-one, the next daughter when she turns twenty-one, and the fourth daughter when she turns twenty-one.
It's, it's because it means that each person can gift one time. So you can only gift one time, if you do it for twelve people at one time.
To that first daughter, he can't give her a second one, but he can give his second child one.
At the same time you do the first ones.
No, that's the part I disagree with you being that one.
Well, I think that's, I mean, I think that, I, I kind of see where both y'all are coming from. I would love the opportunity to just look at the actual case law and not see what our opinions are, but see what the court's opinions are on how they rule on similar instances. I have, um, because it's not, it, it's something that needs to be, uh, if, if it needs to be clarified, it, it also needs to be clarified in our local subdivision regulations. So I want to make sure that we get it right the first time without my, you know. When I read that subsection B, divisions made outside of the platted subdivision for the purpose of a single gift or sale in each county to each member of the landowner's immediate family, I can understand where you're coming from, but I can also understand that it doesn't say one time gift or something like that, so. I, I can, I can, you know, I've had to, I'm trying to play devil's advocate and put myself in everybody's shoes here. If it's, uh, and I, and I can see both sides of the argument, I can see where property could, could be divided and divided and divided and divided, resulting in the situation you're talking about where you have a twenty-five lot subdivision. I also see your point where if I, I've got two kids and if I want to give one spot to one kid and then five years later do another spot to another kid, I think I should be allowed to do that.
But then that's where Tina keeps going back at. Now, them kids can't split their piece with the family exemption that you give it to. I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I do not agree with you.
Track.
Huh?
You're talking about the parent track should be able to also, you know, you've got a thousand acres. That's, and, and I give one acre to one kid, that should be, the parent track is the nine hundred ninety-nine acres. And so when you're talking about that parent track, there is no clarification in the law with, with the legislature, and I think they need to revisit this. Because what that, what those people could do is they could say that the one acre is the parent track and the nine hundred ninety-nine acres is the gift. And so, you know, so then if you're going to make a restriction on land that's given to your child, it's a family transfer, gift family transfer, and then that child can no longer subdivide it, what if they instead of giving, have a big ranch, you give it a small piece? What if they have a big ranch and they give a great good child?
Exactly what we're talking about. Now we're gonna go to this scenario here, now we got a big chunk, I don't know how big it is. They're cutting, they're doing family transfer and doing, keep the little piece.
Correct.
But they can't use a family exemption on that and cut it half again. That piece.
Either piece?
No, the piece, the, the, I always call him the small piece, the piece that's created.
Not necessarily the small piece. You, you understand where I'm coming from?
I see what you're saying, so that only makes, that, that, that barely makes sense to me on that part there. Anyway, that's what I'm saying, is, is the piece that's created. And I guess I, I don't, it's not, it doesn't always say it's, it's the small piece, but that's the in my opinion, that's the intent.
The intent is that the gifted piece.
So if we would, if they, if they would do this, and I could even make the case that Coleman could do this, that won't do subdivision, exactly in there. But the piece that's created is this, the house and stuff, that is under this criteria, are you gonna sell it in two years, are you gonna do this? And you've got the exempt, you can't do the family transfer on that piece of property ever again. Even when you sell it to somebody, that's the way, that might not be right either, but they couldn't do a damn, no family transfer on that piece. In my opinion.
That would, that would certainly make sense, but I, but I, I would love to look into that some more. My only thoughts on this one, what I got from the survey review committee, which I don't have a vote or anything on, I'm just here to bounce off of, but my, what I, what I thought that the main issue was, since one of those parcels was already listed for sale, that the, that the purpose of the family transfer was to subdivide and sell rather than a gift of family transfer. With the, with the only evidence being that one of the tracts was listed for sale. That's what I thought that the, that the whole issue was. But, and, 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 and not the issue that, that entire parcel had already been subject to a gift of family transfer, whether it's a tractor that was used to tractor.
Because it had been through multiple subdivision regulations and
Yeah.
That was based on those.
Yeah. I thought that's what we were gonna be talking about today, not necessarily the, you know, this, this part of it.
Ma and Pa owns this ranch, they don't have any kids to give this to. Ma and Pa decides to give a five acre chunk to Pa or Ma, I don't care which, they give it to their spouse. Because they're getting old and they're gonna sell the ranch, so the ranch is for sale, but they need a place to live, so they're gonna do a family transfer so they got a place to live. So they gotta go through subdivision review.
No, I mean, that's where, that's where the interpretation of the law is. If it is for a, if it's for the purposes of evading subdivision review, or if it's for a gift family transfer. And that's, that's, that's where, that's where a judge would make that decision, not necessarily a county attorney or any of us in the trip.
Alright, but then, so then we have to make a decision, so we go to a court case.
Well.
So that's what I say, cause this, I mean, what you're saying in an argument, and all due respect to you guys, this, this one does not make sense to me, and I think that's this, you know, that came out of this book, I mean, I got the right one, but I think that's where it came from. Is in direct violation of state law. One of our criterias.
It certainly may be.
If that remainder, when they put them words in there, it pertains to the remaining tract. Ooh, uh, no.
That's the spooky, that's the spooky. You know what I mean, it's, this is, and I'm totally horrored, just if it backfires or we set a precedence or some such a thing like that that I hear about.
Either way.
Well, that was it, this is what, this is, this is why you do these land things, it sets precedent.
Yeah, and every action y'all take in the trip sets precedent, but I think that the, the long-term plan, what I would love to see for however many terms and office I have, is that at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later, the, the, the regulations, whether they're with tying down a load, driving to the dump, or gift family transfer, or, you know, the complex ones and the simple ones, that everything is very, is, is clear and concise and simplified.
They quit making lawyers.
Law, right?
They quit making lawyers.
And that's fine by me, I'll, I'll go back to the rancher or farmer or something, but I think that, uh, you know, but if, but if we have something in our local subdivision regulations that is, that is contradictory to what the state law reads, it should be changed.
Very true.
I don't think it does.
And it may not. I mean, I would suggest, I, I would request the opportunity to go look at some states, some, some case law, and I'm sorry I haven't had the opportunity to do it before today, but I've been a little bit busy with some things that have been going on out of town. The opportunity to look at that, to visit with everybody and to figure out, alright, are our local subdivision regulations in direct violation of that? But I know that this family right here is ready to get it done and get this piece of property sold if they're going to.
No, I don't, yeah, I, I don't think we need to wait on this here, I mean, if, if you want something, I, I, you know, that's where I hesitated to call the land use attorneys out of makeup, but I was gonna think, do it, that's the very same question. Their opinion on, and they're like, take this scenario, this ranch, and take the family, can he, do they have to give it to the kids all at once? Or can they give it to each kid as he turns of age? That's the question that, that I think, and if they can do it to each kid one time, then, then our regulations are out of line with using that.
Well, I can tell you, I'm going to Madison County on Wednesday, because Karen Al is giving an update, just everything, and I will ask for that question on Wednesday.
Well, if we don't make the decision, I don't know what timeline we're on here, by the way.
But I'm just saying, I don't, I mean.
What is the timeline? What is the timeline here? You've got to ask for that, what is the timeline? There's a money down already.
But I don't think that, I don't think what Mike's saying pertains to this right now.
And we're not.
The appeal must be submitted in ten days, and we've got twenty working days, and I, this, this has been on the scale for a little bit of time.
But I don't think it pertains to this particular case though. They're not giving different pieces down the road.
We've put it up for sale and not really sure we're gonna sell. It's a matter of town and road, we might decide to sell it someday. So, I mean, it's, yeah, it's up for sale for an improvement and above levy.
Yeah, everything, everything else. Everything's for sale, but not on sale. Yeah, that's it, that's the right.
Too, as far as this listing it for sale keeps coming up, out of ignorance on our part, we have a mortgage exemption on the ten acres.
Okay, got it.
Which we thought it was already divided, that's why it was listed just the pivot, we listed for sale. Just ignorance on our part, we had no idea. It's not like we're trying to do something a lot older, whatever.
But we're all getting older.
No.
I'm thinking, you know, someday we might want to sell this piece, and that's why, you know, nothing sells overnight. So, that's why it's up for sale.
Not on sale, for sale.
For sale.
It's an old John Reiner, obviously, about that little place I wanted, yeah, we sold it. Dished it up, people, whatever. It's for sale, not on sale. Uh, with that said, I, I'd like to make a motion that we override this denial of this thing, of this handling transfer for obvious reason, I think it's there. And if we want to follow through with, which we should, of, of, of that statement in here, the remainder parcel, cause that throws a lot of these in different aspects, and this is the first one we've seen in reverse with all the family transfers that we've seen.
You know, I totally understand what you're up to. It was just always, I read it, and then I look at something else. A couple of words, it's confusing, is what, what it's sounding. And I.
What's yours all over there?
What's that? What are my thoughts?
Yeah.
I, I think that if you guys, uh, so there's a motion on the table, I don't know if it's been seconded yet, so we.
No, no, open discussion.
Okay, and so, you know, I, I think that, that there are valid points on both sides in, in trying to avoid setting a dangerous precedent so that everything goes wild and everything gets chopped up, I, you know, I don't think it would be just this giant free for all. But at the same time, I, I don't think, I have to be honest, I think that if you override the denial. I think that if you override the denial, it's not going to set a dangerous precedent. It's going to motivate us to, to, to look at the things that we're trying to accomplish, see what the intent is of what we're trying to accomplish and allow, and what we're trying to prohibit and avoid, and make sure that those things are clarified not only with our interpretation of the state law, but also with our local subdivision regulations.
But what about the, the people that have come before then? That went through the process? And there's a lot of them.
That were denied for what reason?
Family transfer on the family transfer.
But not the remainder piece.
Well, there's always a remainder piece, but you're, you're going to divide it.
I, that's the part that's. Does anybody have never heard?
Ever had a thousand acres and gifted a, gifted ten to somebody? And then sold everything, we got new owners of everything. And then somebody else wanted to buy ten off that big piece, denied because it was already a family transfer.
On the water, not, not that big piece.
See, that's what, that's what makes this one unique. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a division, it's a division of a remainder, of the parent's parcel that has new owners that are now doing a family transfer. I think that's what makes, that's what sets it apart from reversing any of the decisions that were made in the past. Does that make sense?
And I still think on that piece there, Kristy, I'd have to go back and think. But by every family transfer that we've seen, since the press ain't here, I don't, has been to subdivide. And you wait two years, then you get to do what you want to do. Every one we've had, we have never in Beaverhead County had that proverbial thousand-acre ranch to give a one to a kid. But is the intent that I've heard, the halls of the Capitol forever, that is the intent, it was for, for, is for a ranch family to give a piece to the kids to do it. This is probably the first one that we've seen that way in Beaverhead County. And that's why, I mean, family transfer, that piece that you give to the four daughters, I've always been firmly believing that you can't sub, you can't invite that again, regardless if they've sold it three or four times, and that needs to be asked too. If that gets sold, the personal property, I said, guy that buys it, can he?
He needs to know, he needs to be all those.
He needs to know, so it's got to show.
Title policy, it needs to say, hey, this is already been started.
But that has always been my belief, is those piece, Kristy, is that, that got created, not the remainders, is that way, and this is the first one we've seen.
So back in the day, though, you know, the surveys were just given, not even just clarifying that, I guess. The surveys were just given a number. And back in those days, they, it was difficult because nobody really read the purpose of the survey. So I can't remember what year, it was not us, it was the state regulation that began to add the designation of the survey after the survey number, the FT, the ME, the BA, the DR. For that very reason, because a lot of those parcels that were done for a mortgage exemption or other purposes were being transferred without any review. And I think it had a lot to do with the sanitation, uh, aspects at that time, because, um, they were, there, there was, they didn't go through any review for any of that inspection, so. Um, there has been some transfers because that designation was not made and those were not reviewed properly.
Mike, I also like to print out, um, in the minutes from September ninth, 2024, I believe it was in the fact that Tina handed out, um, when we were discussing parts lookout, pioneer lookout, Commissioner Ginn, who made me also was concerned about doing family transfers and FEPA transfers because his real problem with access to the road, to the roads down the line. So that's also, you know, a concern too, is with the family transfers on family transfers, is road access and sanitation and all of that.
And that was the point, that was. Piece, I agree with you guys, I just don't think we can put it all, this thing on the remainder, the ranch. I agree, that, that's why I hate family transfers, always have. But you, you've got to allow people to do them, and you have to take this proverbial ranch, you can put a family transfer down here, that this person got a county road to go right to it. They can do one up in this corner where there is no access or nothing to it unless you drive through the ranch, and we don't get to say a damn thing about it. It doesn't say that you can't do a family transfer unless they have legal access. They can do a family transfer wherever the hell they want.
Then, then it would be up to them with fees and fines and all that kind of stuff.
And that's, that's what I said, they can do it right in the middle of it and have it, don't have the whole ranch surrounded. I don't like it, but that's the way it is in that, on family transfers. All these exemptions, that's, that's what I look at. And like I said, everyone before we had is, if, you know, the one out there with that road access, that was in foot and subdivision, little twenty-acre lot, going to subdivide it in two. That's what they did. I think every one of these things, they get it to subdivide. And we went through the legal process and asking the question, they wait two years and they get to do it. That's the problem with these transfers. In my opinion, and if, and if we want to put all of our waiver into the goddamn state legislature and see if they'll solve this problem, good luck. So that's why I put the motion on the floor to do this, and, and I still think we need to get down the road and clarify this part at once, and then also once it's done that way and they sell it three times or four times, can that person do a family transfer? I've always said no, but I, I, I just read through this, I, I question that. I question that.
You question that they can do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think, you know, you, the thing is, you wait two years, you can sell it. They sell it, that person sells it, not can that third person do a family transfer? I've always been told no, but I don't know if they, I, I, I think they can.
Again, you have to look at the history of the tract and what's being made.
That's what I'm saying, if I ever sell the history and that's the, you buy rather power, but you think it's yours. But then this, with the different tastes of each line, it comes up different. Like I said, I don't, I think it's a good idea. And we will get over it. So I, I think it's good, I, I don't think it's got enough.
Just for the, for the subdivision and that piece of ground.
Did, you'll have to write, kind of write that on the by itself.
We will, because we don't want, now if somebody purchases this from us and later does it himself, you'd probably have to go through a subdivision. But we don't want one.
At this time. So that, that's, I, as this, this is the first of first, I'll second Mike's motion, I listened to the conversation, then, you know, if there's enough teeth in it to set a precedence.
You know, it's kind of a lot of them. It's yours, and I have a problem with somebody telling me what I can or can't do.
There you go, right there. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I have one comment. They may choose to switch the names. Right now it has it going from Boltwood to Ryan, they might switch that to Eddie. That's not determined, but either way, it's the old.
Good.
Yeah, I'll say no.
That doesn't make any sense.
No.
No.
That one maybe never.
No, but.
If I come up missing, I'll watch.
He's under that pivot.
Yeah.
And two, that's the part I was really going to clarify, if Coleman still had this, would this be the same issue? I think so. That's, that's what's confusing to me, I mean, if Coleman already did the one, now if I suppose a kid, I don't know who they did it to. Say they did it to a kid, now can Mr. and Mrs. Coleman do what they're doing right here now? And I would say yes.
I don't think the same Coleman could do it yet.
I don't, that's.
And it's, yeah.
That's what we're arguing.
And I see that there's, you know, if, if you guys disagree on that, but on our area, that's, um, yeah, that's.
Sounds like probably a certain.
No, it's.
All right, there's been a.
Because how many kids you've got?
Two.
Two. So if you had this proverbial ranch and you gave them to them kids, and then all of a sudden you have number three, can that poor little kid just get cut out of it? Or could you do one for him?
I've seen that happen. I would, I would like to be able to, I would also have some significant questions for my wife. But I would like to be able, regardless of what the law says, I would like to down the road and.
That's my question that I'm asking.
How the hell did that happen? All right, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor, take a bye-bye.
Bye.
All right. You're going to, you're going to do some more research on that, okay?
I gotta get back upstairs to the district board, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
And two, on this thing, on a different piece, uh, I understand fireworks, the fire chief is doing some different stuff.
I have one thing, John, you have to go through the questions on that.
What's that?
The questions on the family transfer, you have to go through those and sign off on them.
Oh, okay.
Go re-pitch it.
You got the sheet?
That was the last one she gave me.
What's that?
Yeah, it was that one.
That one, yep. Okay. You ready? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about, are you given a testimony?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they did, all right, basically.
Should have been done.
No, you're.
Yeah, that should have been done.
Yeah, about to, yeah. There you go. About the family, family transfer exemptions is the truth, the whole truth, and that's about the truth.
Yes.
Yes.
You want, okay, I'll get you signed, it's going to be done, true. Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your trans, uh, transferee intend to transfer the property after a two-year holding period?
No.
Have you talked to anyone in the county about going through subdivision review?
Just what Tina gave, gave in the letter.
Will the property be developed?
Now, are you talking about where the house is or?
Yeah, exactly.
Which one?
Which one or the, which one today, the answer?
No, the piece that, the house and feedlot on.
The house and feedlot's cut off there from there.
That's the piece, in my opinion.
Development is existing.
I think it's, what I read, three quarters of an acre.
Nine.
So it's not going to be, you know?
No.
Yeah.
Not where we live.
Not where they live. Yeah. Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property, you know, you own that?
Yes.
You will?
Well, I, I'm assuming what we're, the family transfer is going to be our house, our shop, that, the nine acres. And we plan on living there until we die.
So that needs to be cleaned up big time too, just for the conversation.
We know that, yes, we had a discussion about that.
Yeah.
When we went through this, we realized it needs to be.
John, we don't know if, if the rest of it was sold, we don't know what their intent is, unless we put it.
Yeah. So you don't have a recipient of the property yet?
No.
Yeah.
Well, unless.
Yes, you do.
I'm, we are the recipient.
Okay.
It's our house, it's our home.
Yeah, okay. Pivot is to myself.
Yes.
For a margin, though.
Yes.
And neither one of you are minor.
I am.
Are you? Okay. You mind for gold?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I guess that's end of the question.
Did you mark? Andrews.
What's that?
Now you just get them to sign.
Yeah.
Not here. Landowner's signature.
It's the same one.
And, can we see it?
I have both of them signed again.
He's pretty crafty about glasses.
Ten, thirteen?
Fourteen, today's a fourteen.
Fourteen.
This next question, maybe this is a Rashel question.
Sure.
Fire regulations.
It is yours anyway.
So, once it just happened, I read through all these appeals here, I think that's why question is. I'll go to the fire one because it'll be, I think it's.
I hope you're welcome. Thanks for the picture.
As listed in subsection D above.
I hate somebody telling me what I should, my property, my insurance.
No, I mean, there's, there's going to be some amendments that need to be made, there was, this is just something. Yeah, remember that our, these are basically the quotes from Lake O'Neal.
This is, this is what Great West Engineering did together, and they pretty much did it for counties. And so as we go through this, it's.
Oh, so you're still going through this?
It's adopted, but we adopted it knowing that as we go through amendments are going to be.
And I got looking, what the hell, subsection D, okay, I see.
Right now we only have BJ's.
So. This, yeah. But if that makes sense in this section, yeah, we're going to go with the hell that.
All right. Hey, thank you, thank you, that, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, I will, uh.
She was close.